Five budget workshop. I'd like to thank everybody for coming today, the public watching, our finance committee for coming and lending a hand with our budget, our finance department for working so hard on this budget, and the department heads that have offered their time and insight into what we need to look for in the future. This is our third budget workshop for the year, which I think is a pretty remarkable thing. Our budget workshops are open to the public and obviously televised, and that makes it one of the most open and transparent budget workshops you could possibly find in this region, if not in the entire solar system. And I have to say, I'm very proud of that. And we also have the best looking group doing a budget workshop, so.
[Laughter]
Best looking and smartest.
What do you want, Madam Chair?
I know.
There's something coming here.
And with that said, I would like to pass this meeting on to our finance department for their expert advice.
That's gonna be hard to follow.
Just compliment us.
All right, so the first thing I'd like to go over is the highlights of the 2025 operations forecast. It's up on the television, and hopefully everybody has it in paper and on your laptop and your iPad. Okay, we ready? Okay. So I just wanted to point out for the 2025 operations forecast, if you take a look at that budget that we proposed, and you know, the board supervisors authorized last year.
Whoever's on Zoom, if you could please mute that. I believe that's.
That's probably what that is.
Supervisor Santa Cecilia, is that you?
Down here.
Okay, can you mute your microphone if you're not speaking? We're just hearing a lot of shuffling.
Yep, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay, highlights of 2025 operations forecast. As you see in that left-hand column, the budget for 2025 was revenues of $16,998,000, and we had expenditures for 2025 of $16,686,000. We had revenue more than expenditures of $312,000, okay? The latest forecast that we have for 2025 is that our revenues are going to be coming in at $17,618,000, and our expenses are going to be coming in at $16,102,000, meaning that our revenue to expenditures are going to exceed by $1.5 million, okay? Which is a good thing.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Down below is the breakdown, because between the $312,000 budgeted for 2025 and the forecast of $1.5 million, we have a difference of $1.2 million, which is in that spreadsheet as we, as you see. Some of the items that were contributing towards this $1.5 million surplus is our EIT revenue. We budgeted it at $5.8 million. We're forecasting at it for 2025 at $6.2 million, which is up by 3.8%, over the 2024 actuals. Wages, we had hiring delays in the police department, park and rec, public works, those departments contributing to, you know, $381,000 positive surplus as far as the hiring delays were concerned. Interest, we called down interest from '24 to '25 because we felt that the project, the park improvement project, would be finished, and then that, you know, our interest income wouldn't be as much as we received in 2024. But lo and behold, with the delay in the project, strong interest rates that remains for, you know, for 2025, we forecast our interest income about $202,000 more than budget. As you see, you know, with our interest income, you know, you know, from the bond proceeds and from our regular, you know, operational accounts. Engineering, we met with the operations director. We had budgeted for $450,000 of engineering in 2025, but, you know, with the advent of these different projects, he called it down by $190,000, which, you know, reflected in a positive variance as far as reduction in the engineering costs expenditures. We had insurance reimbursement. Now, insurance reimbursements is that when we, the township, incurs an accident in which a piece of equipment, could be a traffic signal, could be operational box with that traffic signal, is damaged, and, you know, we submit those claims to the insurance company, and we get reimbursed from the insurance company as far as those accidents are concerned. So we had called that down, and it's basically, we don't have a crystal ball on what we're going to incur in each year as far as traffic incidences are concerned, you know, related to our equipment that's here in the township. Fees and lieu, we received a fee in lieu from the developer Arcadia. They paid that quickly, and our forecast, you know, versus our budget was $72,000 higher. Medical insurance, that was down by $54,000, again, due to hiring delays. You have to realize, when we work on the budget, we're always believing that the person that's going to be hired is going to be with the township for the full year, with medical insurance from day one, and a lot of times, that just doesn't happen. They'll be, you know, hired in July, or August, or September. So we realize those savings basically based on budget and actuals. Park programs, as everyone knows, that, you know, that's, that's going to be, the expense, this is the expense side, is going to be down because of the delayed opening of the community rec center. Debt service, because of, we took out the notes in 2025, we incurred some costs that we weren't budgeting in 2024 for 2025, as far as that is concerned. Park programs, the revenue side is, we're calling that down by $53,000. I don't want to sound like a broken records because of the delayed opening of the community rec center. Operating leases, in 2025, we did not budget for any operating leases. We decided that to purchase the equipment that we did in 2025, we opted to lease the vehicles instead of purchasing them. And we plan on doing that for the 2026 budget. We'll be talking about that later in this process, about two police vehicles and a BACO for the public works department. Building permits revenue, we've talked to Sinclair. He says that, you know, we've had a busy year, but we really haven't had those projects that would, you know, give us a real thrust as far as our revenues are concerned, a one-time, you know, permit fee. So, you know, we've been, you know, realizing, basically, our baseline or our foundation permits, like, somebody wants to put on an addition, a screen and porch, you know, improvements to their existing homes, so, like it says there, there was a few large projects.
Let me add one piece of color. We showed you the same chart at the beginning of September, and this chart is only different by about $250,000, and it's all, virtually all of it in the top two lines. We're calling EIT higher, and, and we did clean up some stuff we had in the wages side where we had budgets that were a little rich, so we cleaned that out. And so mostly on the top two lines.
So basically, this is the highlights for, you know, 2025 operations forecast. You know, Ed and I will be, you know, continuing to monitor our revenues and expenditures for 2025. Just to let you know that we got a nice transfer tax for September. We got close to $256,000 in transfer tax. Basically, the big driver for that was the Solana was sold, and we realized a transfer tax of $128,000 for that, for that sale of that property. Any questions?
Ken, what is your vacancy level right now? And is that, is it higher than normal, or?
No, I, we don't, our vacancy level's not higher than normal. We do have a vacancy contingency within our wage increases as far as which goes through, which runs through the budget. I believe we have a vacancy contingency of about 4%.
Are you talking about personnel?
Yeah, personnel, like in terms of delayed hires, things like that.
We've run that ratio for the finance committee a couple of times.
Okay.
That was something that we worked closely with them on over the years.
Yeah, we generated a lot of savings. You guys have generated a lot of savings this year.
Yeah, it doesn't, like, as Barbara said, it doesn't always happen. Because of these vacancies, the departments that have these vacancies are not crippled by the, by the shortage of staff or anything like that.
Right, okay.
Okay, any questions?
Ken, it's Nancy, the interest and revenue, so that will, obviously we had that difference, will that significantly decrease next year?
Yeah, we have that on our next slide, the 2026, you know, operational items. That's one of the items that we were going to be, you know, definitely watching, because as everyone knows, that the federal open market committee, the Federal Reserve has reduced rates. They're talking about another rate reduction either in October or December. Like I've said to anybody who wants to talk to me about it, the federal, the Fed chair is retiring in May, and there'll be another person there, so it looks like the administration is for lowering rates in 2026. Any other questions? The highlights of 2026 operations forecast. So as you can see, we are forecasting for 2026 budget revenues of $17,847,600 and expenditures of $17,090,100. Net operating income of $757,758,000. These are the main drivers below. Real estate taxes, since I just submitted the MMA, you know, submission for, you know, 2024, the budget, the financial statements, and the real estate taxes, one of the, you know, pieces of information I have to submit is the real estate tax. So I wanted to bring everybody's attention that our real estate tax base here in this, in the township is stable. We have collections of about 99% of our, of our real estate tax base. The delinquent taxes for 2025, so far, we're looking at a forecast of collections of $50,000 in 2025, which is good, which is good. We do have a quarter mil increase proposed. Originally, when we had talked about this back in the fall of 2024 for 2025, we were proposing a 1.55 mil increase, and, you know, with us, with the surpluses, and us, you know, looking at the forecast, we've brought that down from 1.55 to 0.25 mil increase for 2025.
Ken, what does that equate to approximately per household?
$10. $10 a year.
$10 a year.
Thank you.
And what percent is that? Is that like a, what percent increase is that of the?
I believe it's 1%, but we'll see that in a minute.
1%, okay.
With, get this right, so we're saying that this would add an extra $170,000, right? Is that what that indicates?
Approximately, yeah.
And is that factored into the overall values at the top of the page, the increase?
Yes.
Just double checking that.
Yep.
There.
Yep. Any other question?
Can I just ask, how is this, by not, you know, with this increase of 0.25, and obviously none of us want to have to raise the mill, that's great news, what about our debt service? Because I'm very concerned we continue to borrow and combine between the roads, especially the rec center. We were over on the rec center. How does that, how does that impact our debt service, or not?
Well, it's, the quarter mil is going to be for operations, okay? The debt service, we just got our new updated debt service for 2026, and we have the proper resources in place to pay for all the debt service that we have. The 2020 note, the 2022 refinance of the 2017 bond obligation, the '23 bond, the '24 bond, and the '25 note. Everything is covered with our debt service that we have in place as far as the millage is concerned.
So then the question is, then we're paying down our debt, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And we don't have new debt in here.
Wonderful, thank you.
What percent is debt service for us? What percent?
It's 6.4 out of 22 mils, so a third.
It's a third.
Less than a third of the millage.
If you look at the chart.
There's a chart several pages later.
It'll detail the debt service as far as how it is in millage, like what it is in millage.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll continue with the highlights of 2026. EIT, we're estimating an increase of by 2.5%. We're going to reach the 6.355 mark for the earned income tax, which would be an increase of $255,000 over 2025. MMOs. MMOs came in lower than expected, as far as our budget was concerned, and I'll be showing you that later in the presentation. But it looks like the MMOs are going to be savings of $360,000. As you see there, it mitigated the requested millage increase. Salary increases for the 2026 operations is for non-uniform at 3.5% on average, uniform contractually at 4.5%, which was the same last year. Interest income, like I've been saying, interest income, we should realize a downturn in interest income. Our proceeds from the bonds should be exhausted, and that, you know, with the lower interest rate environment that we're going to be encountering, we should see lower interest rates as far as are concerned. Right now, if I, if I wanted to turn a CD over for the township, one year is going to bring you between 3.5 and 3.75%. That's down from 4, 4.25, 4.5, just six months ago, seven months ago, as far as that is concerned. Medical temporarily estimated at 10%. That's outdated, because we just realized that we got a.
Today.
Today, when I was at the meeting.
Today. We realized that the increase for medical is going to be a little over 6%. And we don't forget, everybody, we have a rate stabilization fund, and we're going to be using some of that, so you're going to realize a lower increase as far as your net to net, as far as that is concerned, because you got your gross, you got your multi-plan discounts that Delaware Valley Health Trust offers, and the rate stabilization fund, which is going to be close to $95,000 spread out through the year, that's going to be reducing our, the township's cost. Items to watch, we're going to be watching the transfer taxes. Some of the people that I've talked to that deal with this every day, they feel that maybe that this, may be coming out of a real estate bubble, but it really depends on the, as far as that is concerned, the, what part of the country that you're in. But we're going to be watching transfer taxes to see what that, what lower interest rates are going to be concerned, and inventory, as far as that is, you know, that is concerned, another variable, so we'll be watching that. Building permits, we're calling down $17,000. We don't expect any big projects, big permit projects to be coming in in 2026, but that remains to be seen. We're taking state contributions, our pension, state aid, our foreign fire state aid, which is, gets distributed to our fire companies. We're going to remain, that's, it's going to remain flat as far as that is concerned. And also, we're going to be watching our state liquid fuels. Even though the state liquid fuels has still remained stable the past few years, we've been watching, seeing if there's going to be a precipitous drop in our state liquid fuels, but that, that hasn't happened. And then in 2027, we're going to have a new police contract. And then the fire companies, as far as the fire companies, the ambulance companies, it remains to be seen what, what that's going to transpare as, as far as our budget is concerned. Is there any questions?
I have a question about the fire companies. How did you, you said in the next five years, I saw, I think it's Newtown Borough or Newtown Township are having issues with EMS and firefighter, and I believe one of the other townships may have started putting a little more money away in arena fund. So are we, are there, is there any thoughts about maybe putting something away now? I think we all anticipate something happening. It's going to have to happen, but just because of the shortage, I'm just a little nervous to wait five years until we address it.
Well, as it says, in the next five years, we haven't discussed it with the supervisors about putting anything away specifically for this purpose, as far as the fire companies and the ambulance companies.
I have a comment. There is a meeting or a conference with PACDO regarding the emergency services and systems in Moreington at 8:30 in the morning on October 18th, so maybe a lot of these questions could be answered at that conference.
I would also like to add, as the liaison for the finance committee, that the topic has been brought up, and that is something that I believe that they're very interested in looking into as well. So we, we aren't waiting five years to, to look into it, we're looking into it now, and we've been looking into it for a couple of years now. It's just affecting all the municipalities in the region, so we are making sure we're looking at it.
I have a question, if I may. Can you guesstimate or project at all, with the decrease in interest rate by the Fed coming in 2026, perhaps earlier, what effect that might have on our pension returns?
That's an excellent question.
Oh, thank you.
The pension plans right now have their equities and their fixed investments. So, excuse me, the equities are 65%, and the fixed, fixed investments are at 35, so we have a 65-35 mix. So as far as the interest income, that would probably affect our fixed income side. And I could reach out to our investment advisor, Gerard, and find out if the interest rate environment that's going to be in 2026 would have a, an effect on our pension returns.
So we might have to set aside more money for contribution in 2026 with that decreased potential, right?
Well, the, no, no. I'm thinking on my.
The fixed income market, you should be set at, as long as we don't need to reinvest, you should be set at what you, what you get. The equity market is a downturn, that's what we have.
Yeah, well, okay. I knew we were going to have a problem somewhere.
The effect, the effect would be in your 2027 report, your 1127 report, because you would see the interest rate results, results for '26 and '25. Our MMO is based on our 1125 report, which was our '24 and '23 returns. So that train has left the station. Our MMOs for 2026 and 2027 will be based on that 1125 report.
And the board will recall that we usually have the MMOs from our consultants sometime in August and September, is when the board acknowledges, so we would know then, as we're in the start of the budgets for, yeah, in '26, what we're going to need to do in '27.
Yeah, we've also seen from the actuaries that the size of the MMO is very greatly affected by what percentage funded we are, and part of the reason we are seeing the savings that we are, is because we are sitting at 99.9% funded. So that could have a bigger influence, not necessarily in the future, depends on investment returns, but we're very close to the holy grail here.
There's, there's a lot of moving parts to that, and, you know, as far as investment returns, amortizations, who's leaving the plan, who's entering the plan, those type of things, so there's a lot of moving parts, moving parts. And as everybody knows, or should know, that it recalibrates every two years, '25, '27, '29, '31.
Thank you.
So, and they take all those things into consideration. Any questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the 2026 budget Doylestown Township full year revenue. This is the detail. Okay, everybody ready? Okay. As you can see, it's broken down by, you know, earned income tax, real estate tax, state contributions. This is the same report that everybody has seen before and should be very familiarized with, and should be very comfortable with. And as you see, you know, with the forecast for 2025, you see there for the proposed budget for 2026, it's almost $6.4 million with an increase of $155,000. It's up, you know, we're 3.8%, like I had indicated before. Real estate tax, that is basically because of the millage increase for operations. You got a quarter mil there for the general fund, reallocated millage from the roads and bridges over to park and rec operations. So that's a net-net to each other, okay? That's a zero. So basically, like I'm trying to emphasize to everybody, that we're having a quarter mil increase for 2026. State contributions, we're calling down a little bit. LST tax, transfer taxes, I always like to talk about transfer taxes, taxes, where, as you see, we budgeted $974,000, and we forecast a million, we're keeping that flat for 2026. Okay? But we'll be watching it. Franchise fees, as long as I've been here for 15 and a half years, there's been a steady erosion of our franchise fees. Everybody's going streaming, and, you know, as far as the FiOS is concerned, that there's been deterioration on that part. As far as cable is concerned, it seems like it's remained stable over the, over the years. Park and recreation programs, which is very important, we're calling that up. The CRC is going to be in operation, and, you know, we're hoping that we have a lot of positive programs and lots of activity over there at the community rec center.
Ken, so that is only up 50,000 from the forecast, but we're going to have four quarters of the CRC operation versus one quarter.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so wouldn't you expect that potentially to be a significantly higher number?
Well, we've consulted with the park and rec director, and these numbers are coming from the park and recreation department. This is what they're, they're forecasting and budgeting for, for 2026.
We can hope.
Yeah. Are their expenses up significantly? You would think, right?
Well, you'll see. We're just talking about revenue here, okay? Golf outing, everybody loves the golf outing.
Particularly prize winners.
What more can I say? So.
Act income, right?
Yes.
We just had our golf outing, and I heard it was amazing.
It was amazing.
Amazing, thank you.
Very successful, even though I played like.
May I ask, with the golf outing revenue, is that just straight, do you then deduct the expenses and the costs of staffing, or is that just all the revenue that's come in?
This is, these number, these.
Gross.
This, this is.
Gross.
This is gross. This is gross, everybody, and then. And then the revenue, the expenditures will be on the second page, on the next page. Okay? It's a good question, but this is gross. Summer concerts, we're calling that down a little bit from the previous year, but summer concerts remain strong.
We just rounded it.
Here's our interest income, okay? Our forecast is for $433,000, and we're calling it down by, you know, $194,000 to $239.
May I ask just a quick question, just for clarification?
You can ask all the questions you want.
Well, I won't, but, summer concerts, is that due to sponsorship? Is that where that money's come from?
It's sponsorship and what we sell on site.
Okay.
And 50/50.
Right.
Vendors coming.
But mostly sponsors.
Mostly sponsors. Yeah.
This is, this is a gross figure.
Small amount, hot dog sales.
Be surprised, sometimes.
Towns built on hot dogs.
And then the 50/50s are on, like, things we sell on site, the food in the 50/50s. We've been up, you know, close to 1,000 in a night on a 50/50. So, I mean, some nights are better than others, but, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Police services, we're calling it a little bit down in, for 2026. Let's see here, what is another really big number here? We got the fees in lieu, as you see, the parks fee in lieu. We received, you know, that money this year for the fee in lieu of from Arcadia, and we're calling that down to $50,000 at a reduction of $96,000.
Yeah, look at the history.
Mm-hmm. It's pretty up and down as far as the history is concerned. Important, but not a big significant mover as far as our revenues are concerned, okay? And then we have the pass-throughs, real estate taxes for debt service, ambulance, fire companies and fire relief, you know, DTMA. Anything that you would like me to expand on? Any questions?
Can I ask a question? Are we seeing, like, the dog park, I mean, the concerts starting to be impacted? I mean, you know, change is happening, the borough is, is, you know, pushing their, you know, their efforts with their concerts and some of the other places. I didn't know if we were being impacted at all. If our dog, like, numbers are increasing, decreasing. I'm not even sure if the borough is still a part of that.
Yes, their, their boroughs still, borough members are still part of the dog park. Their concerts are, you know, limited, not, we did like 13, 14 concerts the last few years. We, we probably this year had a few of our concerts where there were 4,000 people in the park on a Wednesday night. Averaging probably 2,000 to 2,500 a concert. And we have the venue to be able to accommodate that.
So to answer your question, Nancy, the, the dog park fees have been stable. I see them all the time as far as renewals are concerned. So that, that revenue stream is, has been stable. As far as I know about the, the concerts, when I talked to the Park and Rec Department, they say that the tenants at those venues have been very strong for 2025.
Yeah, no, it looks great. Quick question, do we know within the dog park how many are actually constituents and township members versus non-t township? Just out of curiosity, because the dog park is expensive, and I'm just sort of curious, and I've enjoyed the dog park, I'm just sort of curious, it might be something to look at.
I don't have that answer.
Maybe get another.
We don't have that answer.
I don't, I don't have that answer for you, but.
I had it a couple of years ago, and I think that, I don't know, I can't remember the ratio, but it was pretty strong non-resident from what I remember, so, okay, I'll follow.
Which they pay more, they usually pay more as non-residents as well, too, so.
The dog park, I believe, is very popular because of all the improvements that we continue to do, to the dog park. So that remains a viable park here in the township, not only because of the attendance and the renewals, is because of the improvements, too.
Right. In addition, I believe the classes that they have to prepare to, you know, participate at the dog park are also very popular as well, and pretty well-attended.
I, I believe, I've, I've used it, and it's lovely, and you definitely feel safe. I just would be interested.
Use on police.
To see what the impact is and how much we're actually paying for that, how many are actually from the residents or local residents versus non-residents.
Okay, noted.
Okay, any additional questions about 2026 revenue? Okay. Let's go to expenditures. We'll skip over the summary.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I go back to one more question about the revenue? With the Park and Rec Center and the programs, as we noted, they're not real high. Do we have partners, partnerships with DAA or CBAA or any of those organizations committed yet?
Yes, they are renting the facility. They're running programs and things like that in the facility. So in terms of donors or some of that, maybe, maybe not, but they are utilizing the facility. They're doing basketball and things like that, volleyball, other, so rentals are, are very popular with the athletic associations.
Right. I, I, the reason I ask, well, now we've talked about it, but I haven't seen it yet, so, and I would love to see something. There was at one point, the finance committee long ago had put sort of a chart together and had done the finances of how much rentals versus how much local community programs and sort of how to help offset the cost of, in putting it, and I would love to see that chart, I think we talked about it again in April. I've asked for it a couple of times, but I would love to sort of see what that bigger picture looks like.
Nancy, something's going on with your audio. I'm not sure if you need to do something with your computer. It's, we can hear you, but there's just a lot of background noise.
I'm, I'm sitting quietly in a room by myself, so I'm not sure.
Oh, it's much better. I don't know what happened, but it's much better.
Okay, yeah.
Can, can we, can we move on?
Sure.
Because for a lot of reasons, but I would also like to ask that the budget, I mean, the finance committee focused on the budget before it goes off and having to do any special projects?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I would just like to reiterate, we've been, this isn't a special project, this is something we've been asking for and we were told we were going to receive at some point. So I think it would be smart to just understand and look at that, because it's a big investment, and we've committed to that now with the community, that we understand and we're able to use it and, you know, and I know everyone's.
Thank you. Nancy, I think that, I think they are looking at how the, the Park and Rec Center, the community center is, is operating, and will, I'm sure they'll be presenting to us in the future.
If I recall, the last meeting or the meeting before that, we had Courtney, program manager, gave a very detailed presentation on programs and estimates and rentals and things like that. So as we move through the year, I mean, they're been operating about a month now, so, you know, we're going to have a lot of that detail as we move through that process and can work with the.
Right, thank you.
I'm just looking really like sort of what the strategy is. That's really, and we have been talking about that. So it's not a special project, it's just sort of really understanding the long term of how that's going to work.
Thank, thank you, Nancy.
Okay, back to the 2026 budget. We're going to, we're going to skip over the expense summary, and we're going to go into by department for the 2026 budget. So let's start with the police department. It's always a good place to start. We have the full year operations expense. As you can see, that their, you know, wages are going to increase from year to year by $311,000. That's because of the new hires are going to be on for the entire year. It's going to have, you know, your police officers going through the step-up process from a one-year to a two-year to a three-year officer, and that's all, you know, incorporated into that proposed budget for 2026. We have the non-uniform, based on the raises of 3.5% for the non-uniform members of the police department. As you can see there, we got supplies and gasoline and all sorts of wonderful things that are going on with the police department. As far as repair and equipment, it looks like we have support software and accrued costs as far as that is concerned. Training is going to, but that's, it's increased training for new officers of, you know, 42, of $4,270 versus the previous year. So tuition reimbursement, that's utilization dependent, whether our officer's going to take it or not. But we budgeted basically, as you can see in the prior years, the full amount. Any questions?
Mick.
Go ahead. Yes, I hear a question.
Yeah, when you do administration and increase in wages, that doesn't include the benefits, or is that, is that wage, does wages include the benefits, all the benefits we put out as well?
No. No, it's just wages, yes. No, doesn't include the French benefits. That's on another page.
Okay.
So, speaking of admin, we're at that page now. As you can see, with the new employees that have come in part-time, as far, part-year as far as the start dates of their tenure here at Doylestown Township, they're going to be a full-year employee, and that includes those individuals plus, you know, the, the three and a half percent increase. Telephone, fixed expense, you know, we're talking about increasing the budget to $103,000 over the forecast of 95 for 12. You know, we have fire alarm monitoring over at the Community Rec Center. Electricity, another forecast, another fixed cost. I guess everybody's heard about how, you know, utilities are increasing here in the state of Pennsylvania. Depends on who you talk to, could be to the grid, AI, supply and demand is what it basically boils down to. Engineering, we had called that up in, for 2026 because we had forecasted low in 2025, and, you know, we're going to have, you know, different projects going on in 2026. But the thing is, with the engineering, it's not, it's just not going to be in the operational account. The engineering will follow the project as far as that is concerned. If the project's being paid out of a specific fund, that's where the costs or expenditures for engineering are going to land, whether that's in roads and bridges, capital reserve, or the soon-to-be defunct off-site. Repairs and equipment, up, you know, we called that up by 25, $25,000, you know, over the And, well, I see other here, we've called that down by $39,000, and that's, you know, it's driven by insurance costs that happen every other year. Any questions for admin?
I just have one quick question. So some of the increase in the wages is really due to, is due to the additional new hires, correct?
Yes.
So I just want to compare that, if you don't mind me, indulge me, with the, the police. You know, we've gone, we've had increase quite a bit of the wages on the officers. Is that because of additional hiring?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, it's also contractual.
Right, okay, so it's a little bit of both, but it does mean it's, it's new hires, not just contractually increasing wages.
Correct. Right. And, and like I said, that, that stair step is, is all contractual, as far as moving from a one-year officer to a two-year.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just wanted to understand that it was also new hires, that, that helps the numbers go.
Yes.
Makes sense. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Public Works. Same thing as far as wages is concerned. You know, we had a retiree, we're going to have a new hire, and, you know, with the, you know, with the increase of three and a half percent, you know, this is what the additional costs are going to be for the, to the township of $79,000 for 2026.
Plus a position. Plus a, an admin position and not department.
Thank you. Traffic repairs, everybody likes to talk about traffic repairs. So we had a forecast of $166,000, we're budgeting for $197,000. And as you can see, traffic repair supplies, street light repair, you know, for, you know, forecast higher. Just a side note, that the township is also seeing that some of our invoices from our vendors are starting to include tariffs in their invoices. So that's starting to creep into our invoices.
That was going to be my question for the increase, is that we're buying more or just it costs more?
It's a little of both, yeah. It's a combination. Any questions about Public Works?
Do we have any major traffic repairs coming up?
Nancy, from our fleet department, everything is stable over there, and all the equipment, I took our new assistant finance director out to meet Dan Markloff, who handles and repairs all the equipment, and he took us through the garages, and I can tell you one thing, that he does an excellent job as far as maintaining the, the fleet that we have so we can extend these services. So the answer to your question is no, because everything is so well taken care of. And, you know, we got equipment out there that's 10, 12 years old, that's still operational.
She's maybe talking about traffic.
I think she meant traffic.
Are you talking about traffic repairs?
Traffic repairs.
Like street lights and things?
I don't see anything as far as that upcoming, that is concerned.
Is it not part of an existing capital green light go or proposed?
No.
Right.
Correct. The operations director is going to be bidding out the traffic signal repairs, in which the, or the vendor will go out through the entire township and take a look at the traffic signals and see what they recommend that needs to be repaired. That's coming up. Oh, by the way, we just went through a state liquid fuels audit, and we got a clean audit. Everything was great. Everything was great. The auditor, and it was a three-year audit. He was very happy with the township and the township records.
Congratulations. Wonderful job.
Thank you. Park and Rec. As you can see, we have an increase of $142,458. That is new employees, full-year staff for the Community Rec Center, and all those related costs to the new rec center and the park improvements is, as far as that is concerned. Programs, we're calling that up.
Yes.
For 2026, which is, if you think about it, is a good thing, because more programs, more revenue. Unfortunately, with those revenues, you have expenditures. So, you know, if you look at it that way, if you frame it that way, that these increase in costs and programs is, is a good thing, because there's more activity over at the Community Direct Center like everybody wants. And then if you go down below, you see the CRC utilities and supplies and marketing and maintenance and repairs, they're all, you know, basically new expenditures for 2026. Because of the delay and, you know, with the CRC for 2025, we, we had, you know, called them down as far as that was concerned, and we increased the cost because that, the facility's going to be open for a year. Any questions?
Ken, can I ask a question? I went back to the, the revenue for Park and Rec programs. Does that include the golf outing, the concerts and all the programs? What is in that?
What's in that is the programs and field rentals.
That's all.
No golf outing.
Yeah, golf outing. Golf outing is separate, and summer concerts are separate.
I see them separate, okay. I see them separate, only because then when you, only because then when you, you look at golf outing and the revenue on that page, and then you look at the expense. at golf outing and the revenue on that page and then you look at the expense on this page, it, it's, you know, I just, I just was trying to make, so twenty-three, for instance, the golf outing was twenty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars in revenue, but then when you look at the golf outing under the expenses in twenty-three, it's twenty-five thousand, so it's only like a thousand dollars difference. I suppose I was just trying to.
No, there's, there's, uh, that's a misinterpretation. We, in fact, did contributions from the golf outing towards CRC.
Good point.
And it came out of the revenue line.
Yep. So those, that, that revenue and expenditures, as Mr. Eben Bach had pointed out, was driven down by the transfer out of the golf or capital fundraising, which is predominantly the golf outing to another fund.
And that was decided, I don't remember voting on that by the board. How was that decided?
Uh, going back to twenty-twenty-three, I believe that was voted on and approved by the board. Based on a recommendation.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't recall that. Okay, I was just wondering because, and is that, is that going to be continued, that the golf outing will be contributing towards the CRC? Is that?
No.
Necessarily, no.
No.
Those, they would be used for other park improvement projects, could be for the CRC, could be for others, but those were discussions that we had a couple of years ago during budget process.
That would.
And how things were going to be.
To be.
I'm remembering now, I apologize. I'm remembering now, this is sort of trying to.
To me, in my opinion, that would be based on board approval and whether they wanted to take golf outing funds and move it to and allocate for another purpose. That would be strictly up to the board.
Great, thank you.
Okay, parking.
I have a question. So the, the increase in the expenses, two-seventy-two, the increase in the revenue is fifty-something thousand. It, but we're showing that there, there's just like a, a partial year impact here on the revenues and then the expenses as well.
No, we're saying that it, it's going to take time to build the revenue to its ultimate goal and part of that, to build the revenue up, we have to have staff to operate the facility and that's, that cost is probably going to outrun the revenue base, benefit in the short run, but it catches up after a couple of years.
So, but next year, the expenses are all in for all months, right?
This is a five-year ramp, so.
Oh.
I don't know about next year, but we're, the, the revenue steps up over all of the next five-year forecast and, and in fact, it gets, I think last year we used a ramp-up of, to about a million dollars in revenue. This year, we're using a ramp-up that gets to six hundred thousand, so the, the, the forecast this year is a little more conservative, but the revenue and the expenses step up all through the five-year plan. You'll see that at the next budget workshop, you'll have the whole, that whole thing laid out.
Yeah, this is basically, we're concentrating on twenty-twenty-six's budget right now. There's another slide that talks about twenty-six to thirty.
Yeah, maybe the quarterly or, if there's a quarterly or a monthly view of the revenues and the expenses that might be helpful to look at. I don't know if you guys have, look at that level of detail when.
Well, we do. Internally, we, we have discussions with the park and rec department as far as that is concerned. There's a rumor that they'll be bringing an update to the board of supervisors as of June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six, but that's just a rumor, so I can't substantiate that since I'm the finance director. Okay, go on to maintenance, park and rec. As you see, there's the wages as far as that is increased by eighty-eight hundred dollars based on the three-and-a-half percent. Supplies, gasoline, gasoline has been relatively stable, you know, for the township. We're paying still in the high twos, low threes, no less than that, probably in the low to mid-twos as far as our fuel is concerned. Diesel is probably around three dollars a gallon for, for the township, so we've been doing well there. Electricity, uniforms, think, some, items that really don't have a big impact as far as the, the budget is concerned. Park and rec maintenance, that's a big number there. It remains stable from twenty-five to twenty-six. So, any questions? Code, go ahead, Nancy.
I'm sorry, will we have then, so we understand what that difference is, I think Courtney touched upon it, how much it's actually going to cost to run the, the CRC, you know, the rec center and then how much is going to, you know, cost to run it and then what the revenue looks like, just so we know, we understand that and we have that wider lens when we're doing the budgeting process because we are, until we can ramp up, which is understandable, we really have to be super conservative to, you know, not overspend. I know it's going to happen, but until it does, I think we have a responsibility to be really conservative.
It, it's noted, we've had many meetings, specifically Ed, with park and rec about going over their budget and their forecast budget for twenty-six to thirty, so we've been taking, you know, as far as what the park and rec is recommending and, you know, we've been holding their hand down through this process. And it's been conservative.
And at the next, at the next budget workshop.
I have no doubt, I'm just saying it'd be, help to see sort of that wider lens.
So I'd suggest you come to the next budget workshop because that one will show the five-year view and all of those details will be there.
Perfect. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
Co-enforcement, wages increasing three-and-a-half percent. We have, you know, increased costs for legal, forecasting higher zoning hearing board legal expenses for twenty-twenty-six. That's what we took the, you know, recommendation from the co-enforcement officer and the township manager. Any questions on co-enforcement? Okay, here we come to fringes. Fringes include the uniform, you know, MMOs for twenty-twenty-six. As you can see, look at the twenty-twenty-five forecast, we're going to be putting in one-point-nine, almost two million dollars into the MMOs, into the pension plans for twenty-twenty-six, I mean twenty-twenty-five, excuse me, I'm sorry. Now, the proposed budget for twenty-twenty-six, there's a drop there and there's that three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar savings. And the big mover is the non-uniform plan and, because that plan, the way it sits is almost fully funded. We had good returns, like I tell everybody, in twenty-four and twenty-three and that's, and then we're showing those results for the twenty-six and twenty-seven MMO. So that was a big savings for us.
That's wonderful. I just want to say the pension, getting the pension up and lowering the debt on that, that's just, that's really, the cost on that is wonderful.
And don't forget, everybody, the MMOs are based on a six percent discount rate. So the MMOs are based on six percent.
Conservative.
Not six, not, not six and three-quarters, not seven or eight, six percent, that's what this is based on. The non-uniform DC plan continues to grow, we got more members, we just, we're probably going to hire our twenty-first member, but we're up to twenty members as far as that plan is concerned, it's continuing to grow. Medical insurance, the proposed budget, I suspect that will be changing because we had forecast for the twenty-twenty-six budget, a ten percent increase, and that's coming in around six-point-one percent as far as our medical insurance was concerned. And like I explained, we got the multi-plan discount and we got the rate stabilization fund to reduce those costs for the township. And.
So this will change.
Yes, that will change. Anything else here? Post-employment health, that's based, that's going to be increasing based on police contracts. Workers' comp, that went up for the township in twenty-twenty-five because we had an audit of our workers' comp and we had to pay out an additional seventeen thousand dollars into the trust, we had to make another seventeen thousand dollar contribution because of our actual versus the estimated wages for the twenty-five, for the twenty-twenty-four year, okay? So those costs are realized in twenty-twenty-five. Then we got a bill from our Doylestown Borough who happens to be the host municipality for our workers' comp for the fire companies. Their carrier had a increase of about seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars over what we had realized in the prior years and that's just based on increases to that insurance, you know, as far as workers' comp is concerned. So we're calling that up by, you know, another ninety-eight hundred dollars. Fringe page is very interesting, in my opinion. Any questions?
Apologies.
You want to go back to summary or go to this?
I'm going to go back to capital.
Um.
Summary is everything we just talked about.
Yes, does anybody have any appetite about going back to the expense summary page?
Just the stuff at the bottom is different.
Yeah. That's pretty straightforward.
Um, I don't hear any.
No.
I'd say move on to capital.
Well, let's move on to the, we've got to cover this next page.
On the bridge, yeah.
Yes, we have to get in.
Can you, I remember long ago you had done like almost just a pie chart that broke out, you know, the expenses and the operations, you know, both sides of it, but love to see that pie chart just to see how the overall budget looks that way.
When we do the budget in brief, we'll be putting that together.
Yeah, duly noted, we'll have pie charts for revenues and expenditures in the budget in brief.
Thank you.
Would you like me to take this one?
Oh, be my guest.
Um, we started out talking about twenty-five and the benefits that accrued to us for twenty-six, principally because of EIT revenue and the savings and MMOs. And as we started to work on the long-range model that goes out through the five years, it struck me that we are probably in a different position today than we were a year ago and it probably would help us if we could understand what those differences are. So this is, in some sense, a weird comparison. This is a comparison of the years that are common, twenty-six through thirty, or through twenty-nine, excuse me, and that we had in the twenty-twenty-five budget and also what we have in this year's budget. And I, so the left-hand column is twenty-twenty-five budget, what we called it at that time, and the twenty-twenty-six estimate is the same figures for the same period. And I thought that difference would be illuminating. If you take the very top line, net operating income is the difference between revenues and expenses. And you'll see that we were projecting that we would have losses a year ago of a million one, a million two or so over that period of time. And today, we're estimating we're going to have profits on the side, I know this is government, but we're going to be positive two-point-seven, which is a swing of three-point-nine million dollars. This is not small potatoes. Some really good things have happened and we need to take stock of what that tells us. EIT revenue is perhaps the biggest. It's worth one-point-nine million of that change and you can see what the, what the revenue is for that, that five-year period, it's, it's huge. And that's assuming that we have two-and-a-half percent annual growth throughout all that period and if you remember what Ken just said, we had higher than that growth from this year. But this is more typical of what we've seen. We use ten, twelve-year averages to see what this is. Let's skip taxes for the moment, that's, because that's our tax plan, that's totally up to the board, but that also is showing, throwing off a benefit. I'd like to skip down to fringes, where it's fringes. Here we go. So this is an expense line and this, even though we have medical in a ten percent this year, our fringes have gone from seventeen-point-one to sixteen-point-six over that period, a five-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-dollar benefit. Bear in mind that that is one-point-three-million dollars of that is because we could call those MMOs down. That three-sixty that you saw this year is per year. So you do the, you do the math, but that's a lot of money. Now, it's offset in our forecast because we're calling medical dental up a little bit and I guess FICA or workers' comp, so it really only ends up being five-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand. Anyway, these twelve or fifteen items, I won't, don't really want you to focus on them so much as to note that there's both pluses and there's minuses. And at the bottom, if you take the difference that we just told, talked about in the twenty-twenty-five forecast at a million-two and you take the difference that comes out of this report, three-point-nine million, that says we are, over this period of time, bringing in five-point-one million dollars more in net income than we thought we were going to a year ago. Just think about that for a minute. If we do a million dollars worth of capital a year, that funds it. So this fundamentally alters what we, what our position is as, and, and I was brought to do this because I'm trying to work the long-range model and fit the capital in and do all this and low and behold, it was working and I'm going to, why is that? And, and what are the reasons? So I don't want to hang up on this, I don't want to explain what was our mindset in twenty-twenty-five versus what it is today. This is what the numbers say and although it may not all be, be five million dollars, not all of that is in the general fund. What this has allowed me to do, as you're going to see this as we get into the capital section, is I'm, I was, have been able to build this model with four-point-three-million dollars in transfers from the general fund into capital programs over the course of the next five years and low and behold, we can handle the capital we've been asked to do. So that's, it does need some tax help and you'll see that in just a second, but that's what the thrust of this report is all about. Now, you want to add something to it?
Well, as far as the capital expenditures are concerned, we're going to continue our program that we're going to be allocating the project, you know, over the, over a year, okay? And it all bases, is all based on cash flow, okay? And we're going to have one project, if it has the proper resources in place, we're going to, you know, move that project along. And if it has to do with green light go or reimbursable type of situation, trails, bike and hike trails, we're going to, you know, do that project, but we're going to wait until we get the reimbursement from that project as far as, as far as the township is concerned. So if this, these projects are all going to be based on cash flow position and, you know, we're going to be prioritizing them. We have, and you'll see with our timeline as far as capital is concerned in a later slide that how we're going to do this.
Okay, so the last two pages in this part of the presentation give you a peek at the five-year plan. And so I would urge you to turn to the millage plan. If you look in the twenty-twenty-six column, you will see that we are proposing a quarter-mill increase from twenty-five to twenty-six, a one-point-one percent to answer somebody's question on percentage, but we're doing a bunch of other things. The part at the bottom of the page shows reallocations between various funds. So at the same time. various funds. So at the same time, we're going to go look at the fund balance page last. But you'll, you'll see that the funds are all okay as we move these millages around. So we're taking total millage and increasing it by a quarter, but we're supporting parks and rec by taking a mill from roads and bridges and moving it there. And we're, we're putting that quarter of mill right into the general fund. Now, it's important to understand that we're funding capital by transferring dollars from the general fund to capital reserve or the other funds where the capital occurs. So money goes into the general fund. That's the most flexible way to do it. I mean, you, you can use it for that, or if there's an emergency or whatever, we, we, we can do other things. As you go out, what you're, what you're seeing, that the real, the complete tax proposal is a quarter mill this year at $10 per average household, and then a half a mill a year each of the following years, which is $20 a household, average, spread out all across that period. And what that does is give the general fund support through all this, both for transferring things out for capital, but also to handle the operating expenses, which are expected also to grow during the same period. So it brings us to a balanced plan, which is what's on the last page. This is an eye chart. I apologize. I should have put the one in with graphs and, and that. But this is, these are the numbers behind it. The general fund being the piece on the top. And I would draw your eye all the way out to the right. We use some standards as to where we have to be at the end of year three and into year five. Those standards being, we have to be in the 15% to 20% range in year three and no less than 10% in year five. But we've done yet another thing. You'll notice that there's two lines for the general fund. There actually have always been there. But the second line is called an operating reserve. That is basically Ken Wallace's rainy day emergency fund, which is here. It's about two months or so worth of operating expense. And that is there in case catastrophe happens. So this year, we're measuring the, the percentages against the operating line, which is the top one. So this is saying that in year five, 1.971, that fund balance is in fact 10.2% of our $19.3 million operating expenses for that period. So that's just the general fund. But if you go through the rest of it, and we can go through this in a lot more detail next week, I just am anxious to tell you that this whole thing that we're talking about, good news for this year, that news extends, and it, it's illuminating the entire plan for the five-year period. And this, this is where we are, at least in totals for that period.
So one of the questions that I've, I've heard people ask is, why don't we have 30% reserve in our funds? Like, why, why do we put it between 10 and 15%? I know this was a discussion that we had and a policy that we created with the board at some point.
That's, Jen, that's a great question. It's based on GFOA's recommended, as far as the, the fund balance percentages are concerned. So that's, that was my frame of reference to look at. What, what was GFOA's recommendation? And for best practice, that's the parameters that they had set up.
Thank you.
But it could be, if it has to be higher, it needs to be higher, it needs to be higher. But that's at least the policy we're working under at this point.
If this is a spoiler for next meeting, stop me. But going into '27, '28, where we have, you know, our, our funds going up, taxes are going up, then suddenly, you know, the goal is to get that general fund up, and then '29, '30, we start going back down. What's, what's triggering?
Oh, yes. I mean, if, if I was to show you the graphical version of this, it's got the same characteristics as it always has.
Okay, the same.
We are still using reserves.
Be careful.
Yeah, so, so, so it, the, the operating one comes up, stays flat, and slows down. I will show you all that, the next one. But I, as you found, we have found ways to keep pushing that bump out. And it, it may be there's some other approach to it that makes sense. But, and maybe it says that in the future, there would say six years to 10 years out, there would have to be a bigger tax correction. But we're saying that everything we know, capital and operations, fit within this framework and deliver a budget that fits that, those standards.
And like this year shows, sometimes the estimate correction is a lot smaller than we think it's going to be.
Right, right.
Because, now, don't forget, the outer years, we're construction, constructing the budget as business as usual. We don't, we don't incorporate any economic downturns as far as state level, national level, or anything like that. It's just business as usual. You know, we have full employment. We have increases to, you know, variable and fixed expenses. And that's the way, you know, we build those outer years. So.
Ultimately, I was just going to say, ultimately, our millage from '24 to '30 goes up. I mean, I'm just.
2.55.
I understand you have your, the operational reserve. Tell me, that, is that used for things like when you're doing bike and hike trails and there's additional engineering fees?
It's used for nothing. It's there as a reserve.
Things? I'm just giving that as an example.
Uh, no, no. The, the, the operating reserve is at the behest of the township supervisors on how they want to use that reserve. I just went ahead and took money from the operations and put them into conservative investments, money markets, CDs, to ride the wave of interest rates we're concerned. So we could realize those bigger income, interest income as far as that was concerned. The, it's a philosophical thing as far as the 1.9 million dollars, but it's at the behest, like I said, of the township supervisors on how they want to use that money.
So have we used it or spent it in the past? Have you, like, what's been that little extra net? Like, I remember, there would always be that, wow, we, we, lo and behold, Ed would always say, we got it great, you know, we finally got all of our, you know, building permit numbers in, and they always were pretty tremendous, especially like during COVID.
Yeah, that would be some of it. But basically, basically, Nancy, it was based, based on cash flow at a specific time and date during the year. And we had, you know, this, this excess money sitting in our operations. And it was more advantageous to, to set up these, these small investments to the side.
All right. So if we have excess money, I don't want to raise any kind of taxes. If anything, I'd like to see us use that towards fire or somewhere where, you know, it's, we're, we're starting to prepare rather than spending more. To me, it doesn't justify us spending more. It justifies that we probably collected too much, or that we maybe need a way to address our debt, or.
Isn't the idea that it's an emergency fund, essentially?
Yeah, Nancy, I think, I think if, if you recall, we voted to have this kind of buffer, and I believe I'm answering the question correctly, of 10 to 15%. And that is like emergency contingency fund. So it's important to keep those levels. At least the board decided that that was important in the past, to keep those levels in case something catastrophic were to happen, so that we would have funds in order to handle those types of things. So it's not that we're overtaxing. It's that we're preparing for a contingency.
And Jen, if you'll recall, the Ways and Means/Finance Committee was the one who pushed that we needed to do this. I remember Brenda was very strong on these, you know, making sure that we had that, you know, with her experience and everything, working in public sector finance as well.
Sure. So that, the counterpart of that, the fact that we keep this contingency of 10 to 15% in our funds, the, the, the counterpoint, I think, Nancy, that you're coming to is you don't want to exceed that because then it means you're overtaxing unless you're planning something specific. And I think that's, that was, that's been our goal for several years now. If you look at, I believe, if you look at the fund balance decrease without any understanding of, of municipal finance and the, and the concept of not wanting to overtax, you may say, well, why is this balance dropping year to year? It is, it is a planned structure of droppings because we don't want to overtax. We want to make sure that we're funding everything properly, but that, and that we have a contingency, but we don't want to have too much in excess because we want our constituents to be able to have that money in their pocket.
Right. Well, now with the rec center and trails, things like that, we are responsible for them forever. So I just need to, I, like I said, it's more philosophical, and I'd be curious to see where the finance, then, because this is a new finance group now that's really running, and be curious for their, sort of their philosophy and where they come from. Because Brenda was there, I guess, in the early years of planning for the rec center.
I mean, I can speak to the decision that was made around the 10 to 15% buffer, but I think all of us would probably agree that it's a good idea to keep some kind of reserve. To your point, Jen, if there's a contingency, a tornado could rip through the township, and we have no control over that, right? So we don't want to operate at zero reserve, certainly.
Had that happen twice.
I'm not saying that. I was just, like I said, see if something we should look at.
Also, we have to keep an eye on two as far as our financial condition here in township is that we still want to remain strong fiscally, and we want to continue to have our rating of AA1 as far as the township is concerned. That's a great rating as far as Moody's is concerned. We're being constantly monitored by Moody's and the other investment, you know, companies as far as our financial condition is concerned. So we don't want to have any slippage as far as our, our fund balance is concerned. Is there any additional questions?
So I have a quick question. So basically, if we don't question your, and just trying to get up to speed on all this, if we don't question your estimates or with the millage and everything, then those would the next, be the next things that we would see in terms of the next session, the next budget session, workshop?
Yes. That, I mean, that's what's in the model at this point.
Yeah, if we don't direct it to go any other direction, then, then this is the model that they'll stick with to build on for.
But you can also redirect us at the next meeting.
Correct.
But the, the assumption is, I think, as Christina pointed out, that it would, if we do just the .2 mill, that it would just be a $10 increase for the households. Is that correct?
For the, for the average assessment, the average household here in, in the township.
It's $40 per mill.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Well, you, but you will show us the debt service, or maybe you have that done already, to see where we are, right?
What are you, I'm sorry, maybe, I, I'm not sure I understand the question.
What are you looking for, Nancy?
I, I just wanted to understand. I remember at one point, Ed had pulled up and showed us like how much we're paying out in debt, and I know it's on there, and what percentage of that, I think this was also, that was also in your charts. I, I like, I like the visual charts.
It's on the sum, it's on the sum page towards the bottom. But the sum page you have right now only shows '25 and '26. The one we show you in, in seven days or whatever it is, some short period of time, will have the whole, the whole enchilado in it.
And I know you guys did a really good job of trying to refinance and combine and, and jumble them together when the rates were low. It just.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Because don't forget, you like our '23 bond that we took out. We, our, you know, investment advisors have put into the bond a five-year call. I believe that's how you say it. And they'll be taking a look at the '23 bond in 2028 to see if the interest rates are better. And what they'll do is that if the interest, interest rates are better, they'll get rid of that 20, they'll get rid of the '23 bond and refinance it as the 2028 bond, and our, our debt will be less. That's what they did with the 2017 bond in 2022. There was a five-year call on that bond. They found that the interest rates were better, the environment was better, and they refinanced it in 2022, which realized less debt for the township.
We, we can bring the debt service worksheet with us to the next meeting, which will show all the components of it, all the different notes and bonds. And we can also show how they, how the millage, how much of the millage goes to what purpose, so you could see the whole thing. But we, we have a worksheet that gives you the total line. It's on the sum page. But that's not particularly informative as, we'll bring the worksheet.
Thank you.
Can we move on to capital?
Yes, please.
Okay. I think that's item four.
Yep.
The proposed capital plan. Now, I know everybody just got their books. It's very comprehensive.
Does anybody need the summary sheet?
Oh, thank you.
You need a summary sheet, Eric?
I'll get it.
Here, just, got it.
You want to talk to the first points?
Okay, yes.
We did send it out.
We did send it out.
I don't have a fancy printer.
Yeah, I don't have a printer.
Yes, that's what we're looking at.
So we put the agenda up because it has your three talking points.
Well, we have the agenda up that has my three talking points. All right, for, for the capital projects, capital spending, we, we tried our best to have a pause in 2026 as far as the capital expenditures were concerned. We were, you know, our theory was is that we were going to have capital expenditures that were, we were obligated to fulfill, like the bike and hike trails for Edison, for Easton Road, I'm sorry, Pebble Hill, Phase Two, Three, and Four, those type of items, Green Light Go. We met with the operations director, and we have received additional capital expenditures. So like I said to you, and I'm going to reiterate this, that it's, this is all going to be based on cash flow and timing of the project throughout the year. If the resources aren't there, and we didn't get the reimbursement back from the project that they had done earlier in the year, that project is going to be delayed until we receive the proper funding and have the proper cash on hand to pay for that project. Okay? I'm talking about large projects, too. Green Light Go, the soft costs involved with the bike and hike trails, those type of items. Any questions about the philosophy?
Nope.
Okay?
Didn't some of the projects have to be started before we got some of the funding?
Yes, yes. And that's going to be our out-of-pocket. That's going to be basically our soft costs, our engineering costs involved with that project, okay? And like I said, we're all going to be taking great care and watching our cash reserves, cash balance, and cash flow as far as that is concerned.
You'll see some examples of that in what we're about to present for '26.
Basically, Judy, what we're trying to do is slow everything down. Okay? That was my philosophy. I think that was one, two, and three.
No, no, we know you just got these books, and you probably have not had any opportunity to go through the detail. But you've got a summary, a four-page summary that has everything in it. And all of the capital forms that, from which that came are in the binder behind it. So if you see a project number, 2612, you go to the tab 2612, and there's the detail.
This was sent out to all the board.
Yes, yesterday.
Yesterday. So we have, we have had an opportunity to look at it.
Right, you haven't had time to.
We know you haven't looked at it yet. You couldn't possibly have. And the books were still here this morning. So we know you didn't pick the books up and look at it overnight.
I didn't have to do that, Seth.
Because we were looking. Because we were looking at, we were watching the Phillies game, I know. We had high priority interrupts.
So if I may take you to page four.
Yeah.
Okay? Let's all go to page four. And we're going to go to the page four, the lower right-hand corner. And you see that number there? It's $20,799,200. That's the capital costs for the next five years. And the thing is, is that this plan that we have in place is going to cover all those costs, okay?
Get it to.
But it's going to depend on, you know, timing as far as cash flow is concerned, and it's going to depend heavily on general fund transfers. Okay? But right now, that $20 million is being covered in this plan, this five-year plan.
So the important part of the reason why you'd want to do a general fund transfer, just for people who don't pay attention or don't understand the requirements, we are, if we have money that is in our capital, we are not allowed to transfer that out.
And take it back.
It has to be used for capital projects.
Specific purpose.
Yeah, specific purpose. So it's kind of locked in there. But if it goes into the general fund, then we'll be able to have a little bit more flexibility as to when and how we're going to use those funds, and that's why transferring it is important.
So if you take a look at page one, okay, and you go to the top left-hand corner, this is how these pages are broken down. The first page is safety-related, okay? Page two is maintenance-related, okay? It's all in the top left-hand corner there. It says maintenance.
Okay.
Page three is the trails. Page four is replacement.
And beneficial.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And what? And beneficial.
And beneficial.
Two things on page four.
Sorry.
And are we completely committed to all of those trails? Because I remember Ann Marie saying we needed to really pull back, and by putting all the money in trails, it's going to limit us from being able to do other park projects.
You are correct, but the thing is, is that we're committed to the New Britain Bike and Hike Trail as, that's under construction. Easton Road, which will be kicking off as far as the soft costs are concerned next year, and that construction for that Bike and Hike Trail will be like in '27, '28. And then we have the Pebble Hill, Phase Two, Three, and Four, and we're going to be paying for the soft costs related to that trail. And then that trails, the trails can be very extensive.
I'm sorry, I think we had to put something in in order to stay current with the Easton Trail. I'm just questioning why, if we know these things, if there's, could we wait, maybe withdraw and maybe apply in five years? And I just think, I think it's a priority, quite frankly.
Pebble Hill, that's probably not. I think the only thing on the trail section that we don't have commitment to are the bottom two items. Let me take the second from the bottom, Bike and Hike Trail Condition Assessment. This one makes sense in that Dave would like to do the same sort of thing he does with roads, once every five years, to go out and assess what the condition of the trails is. So this is basically for us to know in some objective way what the condition is, and that's a very small program. The bottom one, Pebble Hill Road Trail, is a continuation of the Doylestown Country Club Trail that's two lines above it. And Doylestown Country Club Trail, we are in fact committed in the sense that we have an easement that's been given to us that we have to act upon, and it's also the second phase of a project that the borough is already working on, but Stephanie's probably better able to talk to it than I am. We've not applied for the grant at this point.
No, but we have had conversation and their DVRPC, who is the funding source of the bulk of the construction money associated with the grants, is looking based on investments that they've made in some preliminary design work that they're, you know, hoping between the borough and the township, and also the residents who live in that area and attend the bike hike committee regularly. That's where they live. They feel very neglected. I mean, a lot of the areas of the township, your area for example, has great trails. Other parts of the township around here, around Central Park, have great trails, and you know, they come regularly, they would like to see, and Judy can attest that, she attends, they would like to see those trails, you know, get done, and they know that this is a, you know, possibly five to 10 years of planning, implementation, design work, and construction. And none of those phases get done until and unless we have those grants for construction in place, but we do have to do some of the planning and engineering upfront.
I have to say also, just being on the board for the amount of time that I've been on, in general, the board's consensus has been very supportive of having trails, not only for the benefit and enjoyment of the people in our township, but also for safety. For example, Pebble Hill Road Trail, I go down Pebble Hill Road often, there's no shoulder. Anybody that's riding their bikes down that road know that it knows that it's not as safe as it should be.
It's a state bike lane. Why would the state bike lanes?
So, I mean, Nancy, I appreciate your, and I understand that this isn't a priority for you, but if I have my senses correct, the majority of the board tends to support having trails, particularly if it's a safety issue.
It's not, now I would, I think you misconstrued my questions. I didn't say it wasn't a priority. My point is this, trails are expensive and it's a tricky process because we applied for the grant. The process is you apply for the grant and then you go for it, but we've already, then we're already committed to it, and I was just looking for a better process, one. Two, we spent $90,000 on a comprehensive park and rec program to assess all the parks, and it was nice to see there was pavilion for sound, but my point is, people have asked for, you know, for, you know, fields and lights and things like that, and we can't do that if we're continuing putting money into these soft costs. So I, and by the way, we have, we're the leader, I believe in Pennsylvania, we were featured with 30 miles of trails, and I don't know if I would let a young kid go down Easton Road on a bike. So at some point, I'm just saying, I think we need to smooth the pendulum and maybe look at all the parks and not just be focusing on trails. That's my point. So it's not that I don't like trails, I think they're wonderful, I just think we're very heavily leaning on the trail department, and I think maybe we need to have a wider lens and things for the enjoyment for more people other than people who are bikers and runners. Because I think long ago, I think, you know, it's predominantly bikers that use these trails, not even the runners.
No, it's usually people walking.
It's usually pedestrian. Walking, walking their dogs, you know, it's a bike hike path, so people are biking, they're, you know, they're walking, a lot of people walk, and I see it especially around here. You know, I see it every single day, I look out my window and see the people in the parks, and it's trails going to cuts to, in the neighborhoods and over where we link into the borough and things like that, and on the 202 Parkway as well, that trail.
Just to kind of rein this back, our priorities as a board on the theory of how valuable, what priority we should put trails in or hike bike paths in or whatever, isn't really here today. So maybe this is a conversation for a different meeting, but not the budget meeting, like conceptually.
Oh, I understand, but I'm referencing back to when we had Ann Marie and she was like, we need to pull back. And so I'm, listen, I know I'm the bad guy, I know everyone loves trails, I love them too. I enjoy a trail every single day. My point is, like, we.
We understand, Nancy. We understand.
I understand, I just want to finish my, I just think that it's something as ignored as the township really needs to be mindful of because our other parks are not being taken care of and all the money is even put. It's like picking the favorite child.
Well, not all the money is, but I think this is a conversation for another meeting. I would like to respect people's time here tonight and continue with our budget workshop.
If you can promise we will have that conversation, I would greatly appreciate that.
Well, I was going to suggest to the board that since you just received your books and the summary is so comprehensive, that I would invite you to take a look at the budget capital expenditures, and if you have any questions, to contact me before the 21st or bring your questions to the 21st, because this is quite a bit to go through as far as that is concerned. Do I have any appetite for that?
I think that sounds like a good plan.
Agreed.
And we'd like to move, talk about this timeline.
Because like I said, it's, you know, you just got the book, it is very detail-oriented and very comprehensive, and as Ed explained, that you take, the program number is driven by the summary sheet and the details in the back here. Okay, let's take a look at this capital framework for 2025. This is our timeline, okay? Everybody, this is the third time you've seen this. You saw it in June, you saw it in September, now you've seen it in October. It's been updated, and it is basically a loose cash flow statement as far as our expenditures are concerned. And if we take a look at 2025, the public works fit out.
First page.
Okay. The 2025 capital expenditures, if you look at the public works fit out for $34,000 is proceeding. Front office window and door, that's been completed and we're waiting for the invoice, and as you see, we got a grant from Delaware Valley Health Trust of $13,000 to offset that cost of $42,000. As everyone knows, the Green Light Go at Edison Furlong in 611 has started, that is ongoing. The building maintenance for the police side is going to be starting in November. And then we have the, we have a small nominal amount of money for the Doylestown Country Club Trail of $1,000. And then we have the Doylestown Hunt Basin, Lee Basin, and Knoll Basin that the supervisors had approved for these $3,000 to $4,000 expenditures. And then the IT computers is as needed basis. And then the Green Light Go corridor, 313 corridor, everybody remember that? Swamp Road. We've invoiced the three other municipalities, Buckingham, Plumstead, and Doylestown Borough. So far, the only money that we received is from the borough. You go to the second page. This is specifically the Bike and Hike Trail for New Britain Road, and this shows you that the project has started, and we're going to fund the project in the short term with a transfer from the Capital Reserve after it receives the money from the general fund, okay? So that project is starting, it's ongoing, we're expecting to get invoices in shortly. And then when the project's done, we'll apply for reimbursement and we'll get the money back to offset these expenditures. Any questions on that?
Does that include the soft costs too? Is that everything? Or is that just?
This is far as I, this is for.
It's just for this year, if the soft costs were in prior years are not shown here.
Yeah. These projects are predominantly construction-driven. They're looking for construction costs, and that's what we submit to DCED, DCNR, TASA, those folks. It's all construction-driven.
The DCNR, this one happens to also have 10% back on, this came, got us 10% back
on engineering as well, I believe.
The soft costs go to the same place, but this is a cash sheet and it's point in time. So this is only what we're going to spend from this point forward, not what we've spent in the past because that's already out of the fund balance and therefore isn't in the bank balance anymore.
So is that pulled from the general fund though, all those soft costs as we do this?
No, this is, no.
You know, like I said, Nancy, is that the soft costs are following the project?
Where are they funded from though? The ones that.
Depends on where the.
This one was funded from the offsite fund.
Yeah, it depends on the, on the fund. Could be the offsite fund, Fund 21, could be Capital Reserve, Fund 31.
Just a reminder, the offsite fund came from developers.
Okay, any additional questions about the New Britain Road Trail Bike and Hike Project? So we're going to move on to 2026. As you see here, it's broken down by months. Look at the left-hand side, January to April, May to August, September to December, and we're setting up these projects by the time of the year, almost quarterly, okay? And like I said, it's all based on funding and cash flow. As you see up here, we have the backhoe and the two police vehicles. Those vehicles and that backhoe, including outfitting, is going to cost about approximately $254,000. We're going to take those costs and we're going to lease the equipment and the vehicles, and we're going to spread it out over three years, and we're going to own those, that backhoe and those two police vehicles at the end of the third year, okay? Any questions? The balance of NetSuite, $49,000. The police radio and repeaters for $280,000. Chief, have you, can you give us an update about the police radios?
November 18th, we'll have our determination.
Awesome, thank you very much. And so basically, we have in there $280,000 expenditure, a $221,000 reimbursement. Now, the chief has said that if he gets $200,000, he's going to buy $200,000. If he gets $150,000, he's going to buy $150,000, okay? All depends. We're going to be waiting for November. Bike and Hike Trail Condition Assessment for $12,000. Edison Furlong Traffic Signal, which is already.
Underway.
Underway, thank you, for $304,000. Those are the projects that are slotted for the January to April, okay? And like I said, it's all based on cash flow. You're going to hear me saying that 100,000 times. Then go to May to August. We're going to do a transfer from the general fund for $250,000. Then we're going to have these other projects, the Edison Road Trail for $271,000, which is.
Eastern.
Eastern.
Eastern Road, that's engineering.
Yeah, that one.
That one.
I'm sorry, I travel down Edison Furlong every day, so it's.
It starts with an E, it's okay, Ken.
Eastern Road Trail.
Oh, that one.
Yes. $271,000, it's all engineering, all soft costs. Then we have the Green Light Go Flash in Yellow, another $303,000, need to be done by May of 2027. That is a 80/20 or 100, we get 80% back.
Correct.
Okay. So we have to front the money, but we get 80% back. It's that cash flow again. Kids Castle Port in Place was something that was brought to our attention just recently, and that was brought to our attention by Chris Mason, the Superintendent for Parks Maintenance, and Dave Tomko, the Operations Director. And basically, the Port in Place at the Kids Castle location needs to be replaced. It was replaced in 2019, it has worn out, and it needs to be done, you know, in a situation a situation where the temperature is 40 degrees and above, and it needs to be rising as far as the port in place is concerned. So that's $185,000, and that's going to be priority because it's a safety situation. It cannot be done in 2025 because of the conditions that are, we're going into the fall with.
When it comes to the port in place?
Mm-hmm.
We know that this is going to take, it's going to wear out every five, six years, so is that put into, is this kind of part of our plan for future years?
It should be, but we didn't do that yet.
No, we didn't do that.
Okay.
That's, that's a good point.
The Public Works Building Maintenance and Park and Rec Department Fit Out for $210,000, that's going to be bid out.
Six, seven, eight.
We'll see what happens there. Dog Park Fencing Replacement for $50,000. And then as you see, we'll be getting the Green Light Go Edison Furlong reimbursement for $279,000, leaving with us a cash balance approximately of $110,000. Then you go into September to December, you see there, we're going to be transferring another seven, we're going to be transferring $750,000 from the general fund, and you take that 250 and 750, you're at $1 million in transfers from the general fund.
Say, one of the things that Ken has not said is that we're better able to transfer in the latter part of the year because our real estate tax revenue isn't, doesn't really start coming until April, May. So that's part of what our, our expenditures, our revenue's not linear.
Yes, that's a point well-taken. Usually in the month of May, June, and July are, that's our highest cash position of the year. So going back into September to December, we have the Doylestown Country Club Trail for Engineering, Green Light Go Detection for $230,000, that needs to be done by 2027. IT Computers of $25,000. Cedar Crest Farm Basin, Number One BMP, for $38,000. Admin Building Maintenance, that's going to be on the admin side, for $50,000. Doylestown Knoll, Doylestown Hunt, Doylestown Lee, those basins are going to be addressed, you see there for $34,000 each. And then you have the Pebble Hill Road Trail for $41,000. And then the MS4 Mitigation Stormwater Pipe Outfit Public Works Yard. The Operations Director's been approached by DEP, and they said that you need to get this, this pipe addressed, so he's going to be taking that and spending the funds for that, that project. And then the revenues, the Green Light Go Detection for $184,000 will be coming back into the fund along with the Green Light Go Flash in Yellow for another $243,000. Approximately, at the end of 1231, 2026, we'll have approximately $600,000 in the Capital Reserve. That is the timeline that we're going to be working with, and it's a live and living document, it will be constantly updated because we're constantly talking with the Operations Director and all the other department heads that are involved in these type of projects. Are there any questions?
After I leave, maybe.
Okay. Well, you know how to get ahold of me.
Thank you.
So that outlines what our process would be for capital for '26. We would envision doing the same thing like this all the way through the next, but there's really no point in making this for five years because it will change completely.
Correct.
Between, this was hard enough to do.
It changed from, it changed from June to September, from September to October, and that's the reason why, because we met with our department heads, and they were constantly bringing us up to date as far as these projects were concerned, because we were concerned about the flow over from the 2025 projects to the 2026 calendar year. Our next steps, Budget Workshop Session, October 21st at 5:00 PM. I believe that's a supervisor meeting night?
Yes, it is. Which will be at 7:00, so, and they're going to have an executive session, so we're going to need to motor through probably by at least six, we're going to need to probably do by like 6:30 or so.
Okay. And at that session, as we are planning to cover the 2026 to 2030 Plan Details and obtain approval to proceed to assemble the detailed budget for 2026.
So what that means is that you have all the capital material in your hands now. I wouldn't anticipate you'd get anything new there unless something changed. The documents you went through by department for operations, you'll get a document just like that, but longer this way, which will have '27 through 2030 on it, and it'll be exactly the same format, plus the debt service worksheet, which we talked about earlier.
Yeah, we believe that, yeah, we believe the capital expenditures are going to be static. This is, this is it, and you got in the book, you got the detail.
Will you have final details on the CRC, where we are with the contingency and an update at the next meeting on the 21st as well?
We will not have time in a half hour to do that, but certainly.
Could you send it out to the board? Would it be possible?
I, I, this is not, it's something I do, this is.
That's Dave. That would be Dave Tomko.
Ask for Dave then.
That would, that would be Dave Tomko, we would have an update about the CRC and the contingency and things like that. We're continually receiving invoices for that project, so.
It's not closed out, so.
It's not closed out.
Not closed out yet.
But the bathrooms are open.
So, the bathrooms are open, so the next meeting.
The knees are open, bathrooms are open.
Will be, the next Budget Workshop's going to be October 21st. After that, we have, is when we have the budget, and the board will decide whether we want to move forward with it. At that point, it'll be hung in our November meeting. This is standard practice, decades and decades and decades, it's always been the November one that we, they call it hang the budget. This will include not only our budget, but any millage plan for the following year, so if people are curious as to when we would have our final millage plan for 2026, it will, it'll be presented in November, and that will be, and that is just standard, you'd see that in pretty much every municipality, that it's hung in November, and then in December or January is when we finish up, typically December, we would vote on the budget and the millage plan at the same time. I just wanted to remind everybody of the long-term timeline for this. I want to thank everybody again for the outstanding work you've done, and I sincerely mean that for our Finance Department, our Finance Committee. Our township has got to be the envy of the municipalities in the area, and it's because you guys. We have, I have not seen another municipality, maybe I've missed it, that goes out this far, five years, because we really want to look to see what's coming up in the future. I haven't ever seen that before, and it's just remarkable that we have even a breakdown of the cash flow now for the year to know that we can handle it with our cash reserves. So I just want to commend everybody for their hard work, the pension, saving us money by doing the proper planning for the pension, I think that goes along with this whole five-year extended view of our budget. So thank you very much, and is there any other comment tonight?
I just want to concur. Excellent presentation, excellent information, just, you know, for me, not as experienced as Jen on this or Dan, it's, you've really, you make it easy for us to understand, and it's, it's very comprehensive and very, very well-done. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I say the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
We will not be having executive session.
That is correct.